We have. I didn't think you recognized me. I'm back.
I love it.
The sign in sheet. Should I bring this? Did someone get the sign in sheet? Should I get it somehow?
We're not yet.
Down at the other end.
Thank you.
I realize things were a little different right now.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Oh, what?
I'm going to call the county council of 2020 to order. Mr. Myers has the pledge. Mr. Myers, whatever you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Before we go any further, I feel it's appropriate that at this moment in history, we're facing probably the darkest moment in most of our lives. We're trying to get an understanding of the problems that face us as Americans. I sit before you today, a 66-year-old African-American man who rose from a little kid of the 11th one born to John and Helen Myers, who had 15 children. And I sit here today as a county representative for North Hampton County, and I'm proud of that. But I'm also a veteran, and I'm also an American. And the turmoil and the hell that's going through this country right now, we need to take a moment and think about it, regroup, and understands that we are all Americans. And there's a lot of opinions out there. And the only thing that's important is that we need to make sure that we do the right thing for our country, for our neighbors, for this community. It's awfully important that we reach out and we take care of our own. There's one thing that's always happening in this valley is we've always taken care of our own. And we can't forget our own. We feed our hungry. We clothe our sick. We handle our mentally ill. We reach out to our neighbors. We take care of our own. Now, I'm not going to justify looting, but I will justify anybody's First Amendment right to protest. And I would have thought in 2020 that I would not have to stand here and talk about something happening when I was a kid in 1965 and Johnson decided to give me a right to vote. But we're still here. And as a nation, we need to heal. We need to heal. We need to make sure that as Estonians and people of this county, that we remember that we love each other. And we all believe in the man above. And with that said, I think you've allowed me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. All right, now we'll have the roll. Ms. Zemba.
Present.
Mr. Pimana.
Present.
Mr. Heckman.
Present.
Mr. Law.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
In all my glory.
Mr. Carlisle Hefner.
I'm here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
All present except Mr. Carlisle Hefner.
Okay. Now, I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 21st.
So moved.
Seconded. He got it first. Voice acclamation, on favor?
Aye.
Both none, good. All right, now I'm going to go on to courtesy of the floor, but let me just say this for everybody's sake. Please make sure your mics are on. And I know we have a different setup now, and if you have to pull the mic up or down or whatever you have to do, just make sure that light is on, and the executive is a pro with lights on speakers, so he can tell you if it's working or not. But anyway, so.
Leave Mr. McClure alone, he's got a nice face mask.
I know, I know. Okay, so we're going to have courtesy of the floor. I have a couple people signed up. When you come up, if you would just give your name so the clerk can record it. And then you have five minutes. And if you'd like, I can give you a heads up at about a minute left if you think it's going to run long. So first up, I have Chris Hudok. Hudok? If you would just come up and say your name so the clerk can record it from you.
Chris Hudok. So I'm Chris Hudok, I'm with the Rising Tide Community Loan Fund. Reason I'm here, I'm here to report on the loan program that we operated for the county. Sorry, I'm fogging up in my mask as I speak. So before I get into the details of the loan program, I do have a message to you from the small business owners that you supported. You know, with the $250,000 that was provided to these small business owners, we were able to do small loans. They were 0% interest, they were up to $15,000, okay? To a person, they all want to thank you very much for your support. There was not enough help out there for their true small businesses. These are people that were not able to get the federal money, okay? And it may have only been $6,000 or $10,000 or $12,000 they received, but it made a big difference. Rising Tide Community Loan Fund, we cover five counties, okay? Without getting into other details, you guys are the ones that stepped up, and other counties have yet to do so, okay? So I personally thank you for that, okay, for helping these small business owners. So with the $250,000 that we provided, $236,000 to date has been loaned out, okay? With that, we were able to hit 12 different municipalities in the county, okay? So we did our best to try to spread this money out, make sure it wasn't all going into one area. So a loan was made to Bangor for $8,000. Bethlehem Township had three for $24,000. The city of Bethlehem had four for $56,000. The city of Easton, we got six applications, unfortunately two were denied, but they, $40,000 was dispersed. Heller Town, two applications for $11,000. Lower Nazareth, $29,000 for three applications. Lower Sawkin, one for $12,000. Moore Township, one for 12. Nazareth, one for 12. Palmer, two for 20. An application from Upper Nazareth Township was denied, and we actually got two applications from Walnut Port. So you'll see covered from Walnut Port up north and all the way down to the Sawkin area, okay? So, you know, they reported that they employ 219 employees, okay? Businesses were very diverse. We had a marketing business, a furniture store, a tattoo parlor, karate studio, a couple restaurants, construction firms, a printing company, a brewery, hair salon, filmmaker, used car lot, retail store, and a psychologist. So a wide range of small businesses that were actually funded. That's my world, I get to see a little bit of everything, which is the interesting part. So again, thank you, thank you from the small business owners, I was asked to pass that on. Thank you for me and from the Rising Tide to help the small businesses. And, you know, just so you know that, you know, we appreciate it, and if, you know, we're here to help if this ever, you know, if we're ever found in this opportunity again, and we can help the county in any way, that's what we're here for, so.
All right, well normally it's just five minutes because of just courtesy of the floor and people coming up. But since you're involved with the county and you've been dispersing some of these funds, two things. One, could we get a list then of where the money went? I couldn't keep them. But then the other thing is, if council, if anybody has any questions for the gentleman, certainly feel free to ask. I know normally during courtesy we don't engage, but he's representing an organization that's doing, does anybody have any questions for him? Mr. Lot.
So I didn't get the numbers exactly, there's still about $20,000 left?
There's $14,000 left, yes.
Thank you.
Chris, if you could give your contact information, that would be great.
Sure.
So that folks watching on YouTube, if I can apply.
Sure. Contact information, my email address is C-H-U-D-O-C-K at C-A-C-L-V. Phone number is 484-893-1039.
Thank you.
And we'll make that available to Tina. And by the way, thank you, I don't know if there's any question, but thank you, and especially I like the part where you said the real small businesses, I'm not knocking, that's not, people say I knock things. I'm not knocking big business, but I mean, they have legions of lawyers, accountants generally. I think what you're doing is important, because I do care. I was concerned when the first round of things happened, and some of the smaller guys, I mean, you know, I have a barber which I haven't seen lately, as you can tell, and I mean.
You need one, okay?
But the thing is, so I'm glad though, I think it's important that these truly small businesses, I don't know what the legal definition is, if there even is one, but I'm glad that you're doing this.
And I appreciate the opportunity.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you as well, and I wanted to ask, was there any designation of what the funds were used for specifically, like for employees or for mortgage or rent?
We left it broad, it had to be business-related, okay? But other than that, no, because, you know, the needs are so diverse, and the funding that is available is restrictive.
No, good point.
You know, a lot of it is for employees and things like that, so there's a lot of other needs like rent. People preparing to open, they're going to need new inventory, things such as that, so we left it fairly broad.
Okay, and how many businesses total would you say you were able to assist? I know you said you loaned out 236,000, but what was the total?
So there was 27 completed applications that came in. There was around 70 that asked for information. So 24 were approved out of 27, three were denied.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are there any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next I have Don Moore. If you would come up and repeat your name for the clerk, and you have five minutes.
Do I leave the mask on?
You know what, I don't know if you're six foot apart, I mean, I know, Missy, if they were going to move this side, I'm fine with you taking the mask off if we're social distance. How do you feel, Missy, I mean? Are you, okay, yeah, I mean, I wear those to mow grass, and it is very, you can't hear very well.
I don't go out much, unlike a lot of you folks who happen to work, unfortunately, this is very unusual to me, and it's very.
That's okay, just so you had mics on, and we want to get to hear you.
Okay. I showed up to a council meeting in February after not attending for a few years and landed in the middle of an argument over e-poll books. It was rather surreal, complete with a prop brought in by a self-proclaimed security expert that appeared to be a cross between a bong and amateur radio equipment. Little did we realize how soon, quickly, and thoroughly our society would be rocked by turmoil. At my visit in February, I listened to Elections Register Cozy speak and her responses to council members as well as to the Election Commission members during their meeting immediately following. I thought her responses were informed that she exhibited a rational strategy to get us through the election with the new voting machines, a switch to e-poll books, and processing mailed ballots. Ms. Cozy got a reprieve due to a delay to the election, but she got whacked with many more ballots than she probably expected the night of my visit. My main purpose in speaking this evening is to compliment and thank Ms. Cozy and her staff, the administration, and council for what by all accounts was an extremely successful administration of the election under the stress of all these changes in one year. While they have your attention, this is my segue. I would like to complain about something that is not your responsibility, but you should be aware of and be concerned about. I believe it falls in the category of people not understanding what others are going through or their life experiences. I wrote this quickly, you'll get the point within five minutes. I have dealt with this concept personally in the case of the Affordable Care Act, which for me has been a tremendous assistance in providing affordable health insurance for the past five years. A few people I know have said recently, one dispassionately, isn't that going away? And quote, "I haven't heard anyone else say anything good about it," unquote. The law isn't perfect, but it saves me $8,000 a year, so for me, it's good. In the wake of the George Floyd killing and the protests in response to it, those looking beyond the looting and relatively small number of violent agitators will see people who have been victims of racism and incoming inequality. I cannot relate significantly to their life experiences, but I see their pain and anguish. This is the point. I sat in Senator Scavella's office after July 4th, the first year that airborne fireworks were legalized in Pennsylvania. I was there to discuss another matter, but afterwards I asked, "What the heck is with the fireworks?" I asked because my dog and I were a few months into enduring an airborne auditory assault on our ability to enjoy our property at random times of the day, evening, and night. My dog was not the same for two months afterwards, fearful to go outside or on walks. The senator shook his head, looked down, and said, "Don, that was a case of one bad law following another." He said that there was pressure from lobbyists and passing the law was the solution. I checked the record later, and it turns out that the law in question was actually a revenue bill. Firework sales would be taxed at 12.5%, and the law passed in the Senate by a single vote, including Senator Scavella's. I've written Senator Scavella and asked that this quote "bad law" unquote to be repealed, but we are now two more years down the road, and the problem has only become worse. In my neighborhood, the sky was full beginning of 6:00 PM Memorial Day weekend of explosions that lasted until 11:00 PM. People apparently like to blow stuff up, and they have no regard for what their neighbors may be going through. We who live in rural Pennsylvania take gun activity as a given. It's random, it can be annoying at times during the day. We used to have the evening and night to count on to relax, recharge, and enjoy our homes and property. The intrusion of airborne fireworks with loud explosions into our lives is unwelcome for many and decreases our quality of life. Now why am I here? I'm here for the election. I thought you guys did a great job. And I wanted, my car ripped apart two hours ago, had my suspension out, and I wanted to come down and participate, you know, as we're allowed to here, member of the community. But this issue for me, it's really inexcusable, and when it comes to something like what we're going through now, it kind of just makes it that much worse, right? We're going through all this stress, and on top of that, you can't even enjoy your own property. So whatever you can do, and if you make your way to the state.
Thank you.
I don't want to be political, but I think that this really impacts a whole lot more people than some people realize. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I don't know if the townships have some discretion over firework type things, I would think.
They have ordinances.
There's zoning.
I mean, we usually don't engage, but I mean, you're bringing up something that you may have a venue to go to.
Very briefly, very briefly, we can't, my understanding is we can't stop them from setting them off. So we have a noise ordinance, our noise ordinance is 10 minutes of continuous noise, 30 minutes intermittent. But I don't believe that you can make it illegal in your town to set off airborne fireworks.
And I was just curious, because I would.
There's a name, is there a lawyer in the room? There's a name for the type of law.
Don't ask.
There's a name for the type of law that, in other words, would preempt your local municipalities from being able to. But my understanding is, and there were articles on it last year in the newspaper that said, from the Fire Chiefs Association, saying, "We just want it repealed." And in that one article I read, it said that they could not keep them from being set off in the community.
I was just curious, I figured you probably had gotten what the response then would have been.
Yeah, okay.
Fair enough, thank you, sir. All right, that's all I have on the sheet. Is there anyone else who would like to address county council? Under courtesy of the floor, see no one? The next item on the agenda is county executive report. Mr. Executive, I've had a request for the both of us to try and be as succinct as possible this evening. I will try to hold up my end of the bargain if you hold up your end of the bargain, and maybe the two of us can accomplish that.
That is too funny.
You just listen, and everything will be fine. Council, I know you're aware, you had a primary election on Tuesday, and by all accounts, it was a very successful primary election. And council, notice I'm saying you had a primary election on Tuesday that was successful, because at several points in this process, you could have changed the course that you set without any thought to the matter of where we would have ended up. But you didn't do that. And you didn't do that when you were being accused of corruption without any evidence, when you had a Elections Commission that declared they had no confidence in the machine that you had purchased and put into the field. You could have abandoned that XL at that time. You did not, you stayed the course. After all of the light and heat of our troubled, but legal and fair and accurate election last November, you then, very bravely, and without the consent of the Election Commission, purchased an e-poll book. That is an amazing thing that you did, and it turns out it was the highlight of the primary on Tuesday. I have heard almost no negative comments about the e-poll book, and as a matter of fact, I have heard nothing but positive comments. Council, I'm not comparing your courage to the kind of courage that it takes to work at Greysdale during a global pandemic, but that was pretty brave not to change course during this whole process. And you did your oversight obligations. You made very clear from the very beginning that E, S, and S better be here, better provide support, and better make the adjustments to the machines that needed to be made. And council, very much like with the GPA, when we had a GPA that was looking to go statewide with the P3 program, it took your oversight abilities, your oversight, you bringing them in and asking them questions to allow me to get control of that process, just like that, council. The credit goes to council for what I'm going to tell you about the bridges tonight.
If you have more good thing to say about us, feel free to talk as much as you want.
I'm almost done, I'm almost, I sincerely.
Use the mic.
I sincerely think that council does not get enough credit for these things. Because at any time, you really could have thrown a monkey wrench into the process, that would have led to a very different outcome on Tuesday. And I think that's just a fact, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank Amy Cozy, Amy Hess, all the judges of elections, all the poll workers, all the part-time and full-time staff that just worked their fingers to the bone to make this primary election as successful as it was. I hear we had the results first. In the whole Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we had, and, you know, part of that, and Amy will tell you, is hard work. People want to say it's because we had the best technology. In November, they said we had the worst technology on the planet, and now you're reading the newspaper today, "Well, they got it done because they have all this technology at their disposal." But that's okay, we'll take that. The point I want to make, and if it's okay with you, I want to turn over some of my time to Amy so that she can sort of give you the more specific. But I want to make a point, we're all happy that Tuesday went well, clearly, and we should be. But there is no comparison between a primary election and a general election. The only thing that is similar between a primary election and a general election is the word "election." I mean, we expect there to be two to two and a half times more work for elections, for the Elections Division in the general election. We are by no means out of the woods, if you will, in proving our ability to get these things done. If there weren't lines this Tuesday, there will be lines in November. It's just a fact of general election life in a presidential year. If there are twice to two and a half to three times as many mail-in ballots, I don't, Amy can tell you herself, but I don't think there's any way we get it counted on election night, no matter how great our technology is and how, you know, hard our folks work, work their fingers to the bone. So I think we need to be appreciative of all the people who put the primary election on for you. I think we need to celebrate them and thank them for their hard work. But we have a big challenge ahead of us in November, and we don't want to set an expectation that things will go as well for us as they did on Tuesday, because it went pretty well. But I know Amy will do her level best to get it done. I know you'll do what you need to do in support of the elections to make sure it gets done. But Amy, can you, could you come up here? Mr. President, you want to hear from Amy?
Anybody who's been living under a rock for a few years, courtesy of our register of elections.
So as Executive McClure said, we did have a very good election on Tuesday. We were the first county to have completed results the night of the election. We reported totally complete results by 10:00 PM. We just, today, we evaluated all 856 provisional ballots that we received on Election Day. Those will get scanned in tomorrow when we start the canvas. So we should have certified results by June 9th, which is when, the deadline for overseas ballots, military ballots. So we feel good, we're very proud of all the people that stepped up to work and replace a lot of the staff shortage that we had in the polling locations. We had a lot of people working the polls that have never done this before. They had two pieces of equipment that they had to figure out, and along with all the laws and regulations and forms and various things that go with being an election official at a polling place. So very proud of them, I cannot say enough about my staff. My staff, the hours that were put in to make this happen, you know, and I didn't have to beg them to do it. They were there seven in the morning every day till seven or eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night, every night, Saturdays, full days. So you can say what they want about the technology, but that is not what made this election go smoothly. So, and Lamont did mention the general election. Like I said, we're not celebrating too hard right now, because that was exhausting and very, very difficult to pull off. And we know that it's only going to be twice as hard moving forward. At some point, I am going to come and ask you for some things. Specifically, we need another full-time person in that office, for sure, at least one. But yeah, we're not going to have downtime like we normally would. Normally, everybody would be taking off for vacations now, but I already have a laundry list of things we have to prepare for the fall if we're going to pull this off again, so.
Would you mind if anybody had a few questions for you? Mr. Myers.
Ms. Cozy, I must compliment you on a job well done. I was around a few polling places on Tuesday, and my wife yelled at me because I'm not supposed to be around people, but I had heard nothing but compliments from your staff. Just one question, what happened to Williams Diner that got moved to Palmer Fire?
They didn't want to renew their, they didn't want to be a polling location anymore, that happened back in January. They didn't renew their contract.
Is Palmer going to be the new location?
Yeah, they're happy to have us. It was, we reached out to, there's three churches in that area, we reached out to all of them, nobody wanted us. So Palmer, Palmer was willing, and it was the closest to that other location.
Kudos, you did a nice job.
Thank you.
Ms. Hefner.
I don't have a question, I just have nothing but compliments, and I called you, but I wanted to say them publicly, and I called your bosses as well, so they can hear it again. When I went to vote live, because I wanted to make sure I put my hands on this machine after all the scrutiny we underwent.
Yes, I did too.
I can't say enough about the experience. It was single-handedly the best voting experience I've ever had in my life. It was a machine that, from the minute I hit the door, the safety precautions were there for the sanitizer, the whole COVID thing was taken care of. I asked the folks how they were, because when the machines were rolled out, I had talked to them, and one of the ladies even said, "And I hated the thought of these things, but I love it." And she was referring to the e-poll book, and they had talked about how they had to send people to different polls, it just made it seamless, easy. The little touches that you put in, though, that is not stuff that we talked about, I'm sure it's not stuff that they talked about. The book, the phone, just the little kit that they had, the little safety kit that you put together for them. The fact that you gave them autonomy to kind of rearrange the machines as they needed. I saw the pen, I saw the light. So anybody who came in here and trashed it should have gone to vote on Tuesday. I would encourage them to think about visiting a polling place again, but thank you for all you've done, your staff. You should give them a day or some Rita's or something, because everybody was, but again, the demeanor of the. or something, because everybody was, but again, the demeanor of the people at the polling place, pleasant, happy, helpful, it was lovely. And who says that about an election? But it was great, it was great. The stickers were there, you know, everybody's, where's my sticker? Everything was in the love box, so it was great. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, I'll second those comments. I, I too voted in person, the, even with the new equipment, the staff was, was well-trained. I was in and out of there, there was little or no line, and I went, you know, at a decent time. They had everything, it, it went smoothly, and, you know, again, when I saw those results come out as early as they did, I, I was shocked. I've never seen results come in that early in this county, so kudos to you, and what's going to happen is that the state is going to be calling you and asking, you know, how you did it, and you'll, you'll be asked probably to, to give advice and talks around the Commonwealth. The only other question I had is that, from time to time, we always run into an issue with schools. This year, schools were closed, and that was not an issue. Did you have any discussion or problems with schools this year?
Not really. I mean, at this point, the solicitors here at the county have made it pretty clear to all of our school locations that they are obligated to be a polling location, regardless of what their gripes are. But everybody was pretty accommodating, some concerns about who was going to be cleaning afterwards, but nothing, nothing major. The schools were the, the least of our, our worries. Yeah.
Any other cop? Ms. Zirinsky?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for a good election. It did run very smoothly, I'm not going to lie. I was nervous because of everything that we went through this whole entire year, and, and because my name was on the ballot. You know? But I, I do know, because I was at the polls, that there was not as many people at the polls as we are going to expect, probably for the general election. So I'm wondering, at some point in time, maybe not today, maybe take your victory lap, but come back and tell us about how you're going to handle the volume of mail-in ballots, and how you're going to handle more volume at the polls in November. Just because I know we did have a lot of mail-in ballots, and I did talk to a lot of people, and I'm not saying that you could have done anything about it, but I think the communication between the state and the county maybe needed to be better, and how the state communicated in terms of giving a follow-up email of when your mail-in ballot was received, or when your vote was counted. I had a lot of people tell me that they did not get those, or they went to their spam or something like that. So there were things that happened in this election that were unprecedented, and so I think you should take a victory lap, because you pulled off an election that was virtually flawless in, in the time of COVID, you know, so you should give yourself and your staff kudos for that, and thank you.
And I don't want to ignore my guys down here, this COVID thing, but anybody, anybody else want to ask? Go ahead, Tom, Mr. Jivani.
Command, you did a wonderful job, it was fabulous. I was at a poll, and it was, everything was fabulous, people were happy, everything went smooth.
Thank you.
Guys, go right ahead.
Now, the, the folks that did the mail-in ballots, the majority of them, were they, did they click the box that says they're always going to get the mail-in ballot?
Yes.
Okay, there wasn't very few. So, I mean, I mean, just thinking about this, that, that's, that's a lot of the people that voted in the primary, they don't have to go through that, I mean, they're still going to send the ballot, but they don't have to do the original registration and all.
Right. We're not, we're not going to have to approve their applications again, right.
Okay. And then, yeah, a comment, of course, echoing everybody's, but, you know, we had both county chairs, Republican and Democrat, at that mic, saying it wasn't, I know we're not through to generals, but I'm just saying, thank you, because there was a lot of pressure on us. There was a lot of pressure on us, and, you know, and we had the confidence, you know, some of the stuff that was brought to us, you know, we're like, okay, you know, they vetted some of the equipment, they did what they did, followed through, so thank you.
Mr. Lott, did you have anything, or you've-
Well, I can add to, thank you for everything they said. Oh yeah, I had one complaint. I didn't get a vote sticker. I voted, like, get a mail-in ballot. So maybe, maybe we can put little stickers on the ballot, just saying. Outstanding job.
I'll put that in the budget amendment.
Forget it, forget it, nevermind. Make that motion.
Give them a sticker and a lolly.
Yeah, you got to mail those.
All right. Anything else for Ms. Cozy? I, I'm not going to, obviously, it was, it went great. I went in and, and much like you've heard, probably, I'll be honest, not since the, the old lever machines, which I'm sorry, I was all, the green monsters, I'm still partial to them, but having said that, I, I know all the issues with them, but having said that, of all the electric things we've done, and, and I was surprised, I mean, sometimes you have to admit when you're surprised, given what happened last November, I was very concerned. And I had a great experience, the e-poll book was, was flawless, and the machine this time, and by the way, the light, thank you very much, I don't know how many people have mentioned the light, the light was great, I didn't have to do this to read, or my phone, I was like, oh, like, great. So, no, I, I want to also say that it was, it went very well, I'm glad you're realistic, you know, at first, I want to make sure the praise is there, but you know, and you've said, and I think Ms. Zirinsky, she's given you a hint of what she might want coming forward, but the thing is, yeah, this November, it is going to be tough. And I guess my question to you would be, as you saw what we got this time with the proportion of voters coming in, and people who voted by mail, and those that said, I always want to do this, you're, obviously, a presidential year, you're, you're going to, I don't even know how many, what you're expecting in terms of what percentage more, but do you, did you learn any, or did you pick up anything from this election that you think would help? Not just that I need more things, but from just a, I'm wondering, like, because this is new, this mail-in thing, and, and going to the polls, it's a whole new world for us. And, you know, you've heard all the people complaining that, I, I don't even hear it anymore, I'm sorry if somebody out there is watching and is mad at you didn't write in that letter, but the thing is, you know, the votes don't count, the votes don't count. I mean, I, I sounded, looked to me like everything counted, but I just wondered your take on that going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I've, obviously, there was some growing pains in this process. We, we thought it would jump to like 6,000 ballots, and it jumped to 46,000 ballots. So, yeah, that was a lot to adjust to. We ordered, at the beginning of the year, we ordered envelopes for the whole year, which we're almost out of. It's almost the perfect amount.
So what did it end up as the, I mean, I know I could go online and look, approximately, where did we end up with mail-in ballots?
We had about, almost 37,000 returned to us.
How, how many people applied and then didn't?
About 46,000.
So now, going into the fall, do you, I mean, and I know it's purely speculation, do you have an idea what you think may come based on past elections?
We'll probably get 100,000, 150,000 people voted in 2016. Our numbers, our turnout, total turnout, was pretty comparable to what it was in the primary in 2016. It was, we were about 62,000 people voted, it was only 70,000 in 2016, so even in a pandemic with no major contested races-
Yeah, this is-
People still turned out.
No question.
So I would expect about 150,000 people voting, I would expect probably about 100,000 of those will be by mail.
All right, and, and again, though, thank you, it was great, and, Mr. Myers, just-
Just one thing, because I got a text message while I was sitting here from a friend, and the question was, can we make the mail-in application a little less, how did she put it, intimidating?
You got to, you got to call Harrisburg on that one, that we don't have any jurisdiction over that.
That saved my butt.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy, it went great, and, and a thank you to all the people involved, the volunteers, the judges of election, and you, it was, it was great, it was a good experience for everybody. Thank you. Mr. McClure, let me just say, I want to thank you before you start on your new thing, because I know with what happened with the machines and the e-poll books, I, I've sort of run this circuit before, and as you well know, there are things that come before Counsel where you get a lot of heat put on you, and people come in and they're experts, and they tell you how, usually not how smart you are, but how misguided you are. And for the new people that were on Counsel, I'd been through a few of those firestorms and wars, I just think that your, your thanking them is warranted, because I know I told them during that time to just listen to what was told, said, weigh everything, and do the best job you can, and I, I think that the, the Counsel members did a, did a very good job on, on the election. Not to take away from anybody else, but there was a lot of pressure put on them to, to do other things.
Counsel demonstrated a lot of courage. Sir, we'll be, at, at the next Personnel Committee meeting, we'll be asking for a full-time staff person in elections for this year, and then in the budget, we're going to ask for another one for next year. Well, no, we need them, I mean, when she's talking about tens of thousands of ballots, they need them. Amy, Amy, look, Amy was personally invested, and will continue to be, to make sure elections go well in Northampton County, but she can't be here every night until 7 o'clock, she's got kids and a life, and, you know, she needs to live that life a little bit, too. Opening, we're opening to the public June 8th. We've done what we could to flatten and bend the curve, to help the hospitals with the ERs. It's time to get the business of, county business, back open, up and running. People need to get married, people need past, people need to have, live life, and we're going to wear masks, and we're going to screen temperatures, we're going to limit the risk, but we're open in the courthouse. So put your mask on, get your temperature screened, and come into the courthouse. Counsel, we talked a little bit at the operations meeting about the local emergency. Under the local emergency, we have paid in hazard pay thus far, $1,157,409.54.
Say it again?
$1,157,000, I'm sorry, $157,409.54 in hazard pay.
And they're still getting that?
They are, but the next time, the next time, whether you allow the local emergency to expire, or you change it tonight, you'll be voting on whether to continue it or not. We are having internal discussions about whether to continue it and where to continue it. COVID-19 continues to be a problem at Greysdale, and we'll have discussions about what our recommendations are to you going forward about that, okay?
Yeah.
You know, during, during the pandemic, we've still been making progress, whether it's the courthouse roof, the parking lot across the street, the forensic center, we've been making pandemic progress. We've also made some pandemic progress on our bridges, and I want to announce to you tonight that the following bridges are now open. 188, that's Dogwood Drive over Little Indian Creek, Lehigh Township. 207 Gets Road over Wing Gap Creek, Plainfield Township. 224 Fox Road over Monocacy Creek, Upper Nazareth, and Moore Townships. They're open. Those are P3 bridges. Our testing collaboration with Easton Hospital will continue to June 26th. We will need the cooperation of the St. Luke's University Health Network if we're to continue on beyond that. I'll recommend to St. Luke's that they continue it with, to continue this collaboration with us, because as I've been saying, we're testing to open, and we're going to test to stay open. I think our testing site has materially expanded the capacity to test folks in Northampton County. I think we should keep doing it, we might be able to pick up some spikes, we're going to have some money, so we won't have to worry about the expenditure of general fund funds to do this, but it'll all be before Counsel, and you'll be able to decide what you want to do with that. Let me see, you told me to proceed with all due alacrity, sir, and I have been trying to.
We all do our best, right?
You know by now that we are about to receive a $27,631,662.79 block grant from the Commonwealth for CARES Act money to deal with the impacts of COVID-19. This block grant has several discrete categories. Those categories are small business assistance, tourism industry, municipal and community assistance, mental health, drug and alcohol programming, nonprofit organizations, and broadband deployment. That's what this money is to be used for. DCED is coming up with a plan now to present to you in the very near future at, at the committee that you feel is appropriate committee for jurisdiction. We thought economic development was the place for it to go, but, you know, that's up to you and Counsel. We would like to do that sooner rather than later. As you might imagine, there is a great deal of, or no shortage of suggestions to me already as to how this money should be spent.
Yeah. Wow, that's not a shock.
And, you know, I want to, I, I, I want to get this process moving forward so you can evaluate it as soon as possible. One of the things we're going to do, we're going to use our traditional, generally speaking, our traditional mechanisms, and our traditional partnerships and collaborations to get this money out. What we want to do is get the money out to people, just like we have been with the, the Rising Tide Loan Fund, getting it out to small businesses, so small businesses can begin to recover from the economic disaster that the pandemic caused. We are about assisting small businesses, and when I come to you, I'm going to recommend a large proportion of this money is spent on supporting small businesses, and we will have a number of avenues for you to consider as to how we get that money out to small businesses right now, because who's really been impacted by this? Small businesses. Who do most of our citizens work for? Small businesses. This has to be our, this has to be our priority, these are the people that we must assist. I'm also going to suggest to you, a large portion of our money goes to the municipalities. Our municipalities are going to suffer budgetary shortfalls, and while our grants to them will not make up for revenue shortfalls, and they won't be intended to, maybe there's a capital expenditure we could pick up for them that they might not be able to pay for this year because of any revenue shortfalls they have from COVID-19. They may need PPE, they may need, they may need to stockpile masks, whatever they need when they send us the application, we'll be in a position, and we're going to do this, Counsel, just so you're, so you're aware, we're going to bring all the various aspects of the program to you. So you, the way I'm envisioning this, you'll, you'll approve it broadly, and then we'll bring each of the individual actions to you for ratification as we go through the process. That's how I'm envisioning it sort of broadly. We, we have a really great opportunity to help, and I'm sorry if I skipped over this, I don't know why I did. There, did I skip over mental health and drug and alcohol?
You mentioned it, but I was going to ask how, how that's going to get maneuvered. I don't want to see them push out.
They're not going to, sir, I, I'm, I'm anticipating at least $3 million to them, because it's so important, and, and we know mental health and, and drug and alcohol problems have just multiplied during the pandemic because of isolation and fear, and, and we know, and I think Sue, so Sue is here, they're already preparing to use that money positively to move forward. So we've got, we've got a plan in its, in its germinating infancy, by the time we bring it to you, it'll be full-blown, but I would like to do this soon, as many people have many ideas about what we should do, and I think we should decide what we do.
Mr. Executive, just on that quickly, is, the DCED is working on something, are they aiming to administer this money?
Yes, we are, we will, well-
They, they, that, that they want to administer the money, the Department of Community Economic Development?
Yes.
So they would make the decisions on where it would go?
No, ultimately, you're going to approve the programs.
All right.
Now, if we have a collaboration, like, for example, we're not going to substitute our judgment, if we continue to partner with the Rising Tide Loan Fund, we're not going to pass on every loan they make.
Okay.
We'll give them a pot of, a pot of money to use, and then they'll go use it. Or if we make a, if we make a partnership with a local organization that represents small businesses, for example, we'll be part of that decision-making process, but I don't think we'll bring each and every grant back.
All right, I just want to be sure, my concern is, and you know this, you've been around a long time, these groups are out there, and DCED is a big group, it's been around a long time, but this is money intended for- intended for business.
No, our Department of Community Economic, the county department.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you, you know what?
No, 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 we're, we're.
Wow, I was like, thank you. My mistake, then. I apologize for taking time on that. I somehow thought that I envisioned the guys out in the Promenade area there that they were.
No, no, no.
Hey, do you doubt that they would want to administer this? All right, so there, I'm sorry.
No, we are, we are, sir. That, because you wanted me to try and keep my, my idea.
Do what you gotta do.
I'm done.
Do what you gotta do.
I'm done.
It was my fault. You know, you've had a few questions, so you're off the hook on that. So, Ms. Hefner, go ahead.
Question I asked three hours ago is money and communication with the governor in terms of any other funding besides this block grant that might be coming to us for COVID, for testing, for any kind of remuneration as a result of?
Well.
Any pass-through from the feds to the state?
The Department of Health has poured millions of dollars into Greysdale. The Department of Health has recently helped us with our drive-through collaboration at Easton Hospital. So, there are examples of the Commonwealth assisting us here locally. But in terms of another large pot of money, there's going to be a lot of money from many different sources coming in over time.
And any updates on election money refunds?
No, it's not. I don't know that they went out to borrow. I think the Secretary of State told me that this month they were going to borrow the money.
Okay, thank you.
But the credit markets are a mess, so I don't know what's going on.
Ms. Zierinski, go ahead.
I was wondering, is, are there any funds for people, I mean, besides unemployment compensation and things like that, for rent that we can help them with at the county level?
So, I didn't include this in my report tonight because I was told to be brief, but, and I knew we'd have, no, and I knew we'd have an opportunity to talk about it, but we are developing, and Sue's still here, I think, and she could tell you about this really quickly, we are developing a plan to help renters avoid eviction. Once the, you know, once the orders expire and the eviction machine starts ratcheting up, they're going to need some help to avoid eviction, and we're coming up with a plan to do that, and I believe we're going to use all federal funds. There won't be any county money in it. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Tina's here, too. She knows. Forgot you were here, Tina, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You want to ask Tina the question?
Do you still?
No, I'm done. I was just concerned about housing issues because, because a lot of people are complaining about either the threat of eviction or even their rent going up during this time, which is, you know, it's hard to move into a new apartment if you don't have that first and month, and last month's rent, and if you don't have a job, it's very hard to accumulate that. You see people, I mean, I saw somebody comment in the news that somebody in a middle-class suburban vehicle was going to the food, in the food line. Why are they going? Well, because middle-class people are losing their jobs, too, and it's difficult. So, this COVID virus has affected people at every socioeconomic level.
In decades, I've been involved in government, in and out. This, everything together right now is probably the most trying time that I, when you tape it all together at one time, I've never seen anything like this before.
Well, this will be a whole committee meeting.
What the heck is that? You got a note?
See, this is the eviction diversion program.
Eviction diversion program?
Yeah, so, we're not ready to unveil it tonight because it's got a lot of blocks and lots of arrows, and I do think, I do think.
Clean it up a little bit.
I do think we'll need a entire committee meeting to go over this, but it's, we wanted to let you know we're working on it.
Carrie, Ms. Myers.
Two things. Testing results?
Yes.
Do you have any that you could?
It's about, we're running about 5% to 6% positive of people who are showing symptoms. I'm expecting it to go down. The number of people who are showing up at our site is decreasing. We're, we've been at that, running in like middle 60s, we're now running in the low 60s, and it's going to go under that. So, people, so my educated guess is in Northampton County, people who have CDC symptoms, probably about 5% to 6% of them are infected with COVID, which is really good news because it's, it continues to go down. That doesn't, that doesn't count the long-term care facilities, which is a whole other.
Okay. The only other issue I had with that, Terra Asset, if there's anything I can do personally to help out with your eviction program, please reach out to me.
Well, you're going to be able to help.
Because I know I'm getting a lot of calls on that one.
Okay.
Any other questions for the executive, as long as he's standing up? Anybody? Seeing none, I guess for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, well, now we'll move on to old business. We're going to have the public hearing on the ordinance amending the 2020 Northampton County budget. This was introduced by Ms. Zierinski and Mr. Myers at our March 5, 2020.
That would be Lori, it says Lori.
Lori and Carrie.
Why am I reading?
Because this is right here, Lori and Carrie.
All right, well, it's different on the sheet as I was giving it. All right, Lori and Carrie. Anyway, are there any questions from the public? Seeing none? Discussion?
Mr. President, real quick.
Yes, go ahead.
There is a grant on here to Easton Hospital, and for.
Oh, by the way, I'm sorry, we have Mr. Barron and here, so, I mean, he might be, I'm sure if he wants to address, I don't know if you want to come.
Well, that, I'll get to him later.
All right, be on alert. Go ahead, Mr..
For, for the next 26 days, my wife is an employee of Easton Hospital, so I will be abstaining.
Oh, okay, fair enough. All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Vargo Hefner.
All right, this is where Mr. Barron comes in.
Mr. Barron.
He's fighting with his mask right now.
That's so funny.
Under Community and Economic Development, ESG 2020. What is this?
ESG 2020, what's the amount?
Twenty, six, oh, is it Emergency Solutions Grant?
It's $637,000 and so.
Yes.
Okay, so, things are doubled, is that, in certain places, like, that's one of them. It says Solutions Grant, and then it says 2020 under a separate number.
Yeah, so, what that is, is that we, if we got revenue in, and then that revenue was allocated somewhere else, since there is not a pot of money that was put in the original budget when we get that money in, we then allocate it to another section of the budget. So, the only thing that hit the general fund, fund balance, was the E-Pole books, but everything else has an, it's just like your budget at home. When you get the revenue in, you have the offsetting expenditure that comes in, because we have to present a balanced budget.
And I think that's my second question, because it says balancing the budget, but administration of elections, so it's the same amounts twice. Is that what you're also referring to?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council on the budget amendments? Ms. Barron, why don't you stick around, because, just in case? Anybody else?
Not anyone.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask a question. I mean, it's all pretty standard. I guess the question I'd have is, and you can help me with this, we didn't have anything in the current budget, the future grants and the gaming host county games, it's not a lot, but you have $37,600 increase. Is that, I guess my question is, I think that the places are shut down, so.
I believe that's, I believe that's revenue, I believe that's revenue that's, that's come in. We have local share agreements, and don't forget that Monroe County, specifically the Mount Airy Casino, they have a lot of online gambling going on right now as well. So, there is going to be some revenue that comes in from that which is regulated. So, there are local share grants and stuff like that that do get passed around.
All right, thank you.
And the Wind Creek has honored their host fees and their hosting fees. I know they paid that to the city of Bethlehem, and we do get a portion of that as well, so they've honored that up to this point, so.
And I see, and I guess that's because of just the nature of the beast we have. The administration, E911, that you had to do a major increase in funding.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Are there any other questions before we put this to the vote?
I guess.
Discussion?
One more.
Go ahead.
Just some of the, some of the diminish in early intervention and health choices, is that money that's coming out that's going to come back in in another way?
It's, it's a matter of the timing. Some of it also has to do with the block grants and the reimbursement schedule as it, as it comes in. So, if a contract or certain contracts, and this is just generally for human services because each, so children and youth is different from mental health, from area agency on aging with regard to reimbursement. So, it's a matter of how much services are available, what comes in for contracted services versus what is used, and then when those positions get funded throughout the year.
Because they were just talking at the meeting about them getting more money, but in here, it's reflected that they're getting less, so I assume it's a matter of timing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would guess the human services funding, both state and federal, is going to be really, maybe we're going to see some crazy things happening over the course of the fiscal year versus our year, and so on and so forth.
I anticipate the last budget amendment in November, from a human services standpoint, is going to be very challenging and difficult.
I thought as much.
And it, why is that?
Yeah.
A $4 billion state shortfall?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was on, I was thinking what you were, you know. And God only knows what the feds will be doing as far as passing through. All right, all right, yeah, is that it, Ms. Myers?
No, he answered my question.
Okay, thank you. I think we're, we're ready to move on now. Okay, so, seeing no further discussion, and call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGevey?
Yes.
Mr. Rinksky?
Yes.
Abstain.
Abstained by vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. All right, moving on, the next item I have on the agenda is the public hearing on the ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, PA, to Lease Approximately 2,700 Rentable Square Feet of Space Identified in Hope Lutheran Church, 4131 Lehigh Drive, Town of Cherryville, Lehigh Township, Northampton County, Pennsylvania. This was introduced by Ms. Vargo Hefner and Mr. Giovanni, I hope I'm right on that, at the March 5. No, that wouldn't have been.
May 21st.
Yeah.
May 21st.
May 21st.
I'm sorry, May 21st, 2020. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? Discussion? Questions? I believe if I remember correctly, we've been using this place forever. I mean, there's, you know. Any, no questions? All right, well, then, call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Mr. Rinksky?
Yes.
Abstained by vote of 8 to 0.
Thank you. All right, I have no other old business that I'm aware of. Is there any other old business? Mr. Kusick?
Yes, it was, what, two months ago, we authorized an extension to the audit. Have we any update regarding that and/or the Q1 financial report, Mr. Barron?
So, the external audit is finishing up. I believe they're writing, they, we should have a management letter, and we have publication by the end of this month. So, the extension was well-used. We will have those statements, and they should be coming soon at council's leisure to a financial, a finance meeting. My guess is, once the Q1 gets done, and it'll be Q1 and Q2 get done, will now be getting done at the same time of that financial statement, so you will see those in relatively short order after that. My guess is, probably mid-June to late-June, you'll have all that information.
So, maybe a finance committee meeting in June?
Will it be ready in two weeks?
Well, wait, the Q2 won't be ready.
No.
No.
Q2 won't be ready, but you'll see them in short succession is what I meant.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. Part of what the issue is, is we're waiting on information from other entities that are much slower. We were, we were fortunate enough that the GPA was able to approve their financial statements at some of their meetings, and there wasn't as much information that had to go back and forth because we control all that financial information. But a lot of our financial information, we are not in complete control over, specifically bank reconciliations and things like that. We have to get them from other people, and then confirmations that money did go out and get into the right hands. So, we're, we're dealing with a lot of that back and forth with businesses, and other financial institutions not being readily available, and prioritizing other things, unfortunately for us.
Okay, so, as a follow-up, typically you start the budget process in July. Is this going to impact you in any way?
Not at all. The, we, the budget books go out on Monday. We are requesting all information to be back July 10, and then we'll start to build the budget from there. So, that has not been impacted at all. We're ready to go with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is, any other questions under old business? All right, we'll move on to new business. On the agenda under new business is the consideration of extension of the Declaration of Disaster Emergency Resolution. I will read the resolution. I'm going to assign myself to that. This was discussed at our governance committee meeting that immediately preceded this meeting, and I'm going to read it. This is, this was put in the back. We put this together based on what the committee said, but it was sort of a committee group back there, and I always say it's like a committee designing a ship. God knows where the helm is, but we'll, we'll see if the words came out the way we wanted them to. It's not long, so I am going to read the entire thing. Whereas on June 4, 2020, County Executive Lamonti McClure issued the below Declaration of Disaster Emergency for the Preservation of the Health, Safety, and Welfare of the People of Northampton County and Declaration of Disaster Emergency. Whereas on about March 16, 2020, a health emergency has caused, threatens to cause injury, damage, and suffering to the persons and property of Northampton County, and whereas the health emergency has endangered the health, safety, and welfare of a substantial number of persons residing in Northampton County, and threatens to create problems greater in scope than problems Northampton County may be able to resolve. And whereas emergency management measures are required to reduce the severity of this disaster and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of affected residents in Northampton County, therefore, now therefore I, the undersigned County Executive of Northampton County pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code, as amended, do hereby declare the existence of a disaster emergency in Northampton County. Further, I direct the Northampton County Emergency Management Coordinator to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of this disaster, to aid in the restoration of essential public services, and to take any other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this emergency. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council pursuant to the declaration first enacted on March 19, 2020. The county executive has a discretion to set policy, including, but not limited to, the wearing of masks and temperature screenings regarding county employees and public access to all county facilities. This declaration shall be reevaluated when Northampton County is moved to green status by the Governor of Pennsylvania. That being said, we'll open it up for discussion. We had a, we had a fairly long and good governance committee meeting on this, and I don't even remember the last time the governance committee met, but anyway, it was a good discussion. It was give and taken. The executive informed us of his needs and what he sees, and I think we all came to agreement on these words, and unless there's something else anyone wants to add or delete, I'm going to call for the vote. Ms. Number, vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Mr. McGevey?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Mr. Rinksky?
Yes.
And Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Abstained by vote of 8 to 0.
Thank you.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Oh, God, I'm going to hear about that.
Shop liver.
Okay, anyway, nothing personal, I'm sure. All right, is there any other old business to discuss? Our new, why is, new business? You know, we got to do a thing on checking these. Is there any other new business to discuss? Seeing none? Council committee reports?
I have one.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Human services met before this meeting this evening. There were updates on the status of the different human services departments since the COVID onset. The introduction of a potential new predictive risk model which could be used for children and youth referral decisions. And at this point, there's no update on civil service, no change.
Thank you.
That's all.
Any other committee reports? All right, none. Liaison, any liaison? Ms. Vargo Hefner, I'm, I'm sorry. Ms. Zirinsky, you go first.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah. On Tuesday, I attended the farmland preservation meeting. We are, have now preserved 16,882.84 acres on 204 farms. And previously I had reported that we were going to open up a second round of applications. That will no longer be possible due to timing and also some cutting of the state budget. Apparently the county budget will not, or the money that's contributed from the county will not affect the program, but the state will be allocating a significant amount less. Okay? Got it. Yep, that's it.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Oh, Mr. McGee, by all means.
The Full Lehigh Valley Planning Commission met last Thursday. The, I think it's Surface or, it's not Zoom, it's another application that you do in video. Or you could call in. They're working on a housing and affordable housing trends on their website. They reported it on their website. They have a little committee together. And I think they're going to be giving some, they're going to be looking at affordable housing in the Lehigh Valley, you know, lack of or where it's coming from. And also the, the transportation improvement program. I know we talked about it at the last council meeting. The draft is now open for public comment. And, you know, I'll, I'll be reporting. I would like to get together maybe with, with the administration to kind of look through it. I know they're going to be looking at it, at our market share on that. Hopefully we can, you know, look at that real hard before our budget or, you know, collectively, so.
I, I agree. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none? We'll go down to the council clerks' report. Council solicitor? Okay. That's it. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Ms. Myers?
Second.
Second, Ms. Zirinsky. I heard that. All in favor? We're adjourned.
Charles?
Hi, Doc. How are you?
I'm going to have to get some glasses. New glasses.
Have you spoken with Lori about? They wrote it.
What did you call me about?
Thank you, Scott.[1793.81]